The next item of business is the school calendar. And this, I think, Superintendent Morrison can review the differences between the two calendars.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The two different versions you have in front of you that are in your packet, one starts before Labor Day and one starts after Labor Day. In your current school committee policy, based on when Labor Day falls in 2014, states we start after Labor Day. So I know that this was a discussion point at the end of last school year before I was here, and I know that Mr. Morrison wanted to bring that up for this year for discussion as well. So I think that we're starting to get calls in Central Office of from parents wondering when certain breaks are, et cetera, and when vacation is and when we start. So I think it's been your practice over the years to finalize this in either January or February. So I thought it was good to bring it up this month, have a discussion, and then if you folks want to discuss it more, we could approve both of the improvements that were.
Is the policy has been if Labor Day falls on the fourth or later, we start before, is that right?
Fourth or later, I think.
That was the fifth, the fourth.
Yes, was, or the third.
It's the fourth.
It's the fourth, okay. Because it did seem like it would kind of come back around to the.
Wasn't it before the fourth? So fourth or later?
Four to seven is before, one to three is after.
Right.
And these both show the same last day if we have five storm days, but that doesn't compute for me somehow.
No, the last day is the seventeenth if we start before, and it's the nineteenth that we start after. Are you saying that the.
It should, I'm looking at the five, yeah.
It should be the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Should be the twenty-fourth, right, okay.
And one of the things we looked at too is, again, getting feedback from parents and looking at what other districts have done. And is to plan the professional development days before long weekends. I think parents appreciate that, so we looked at doing one professional development day in the October long weekend, and also doing another one in the January long weekend, which historically I think are big weekends that folks go away. So that each one of those becomes a four-day weekend for parents, but we get our professional development instead of just some random day that we choose on the calendar. So both of these have two professional development days before the school year starts, and then one placed in October and one placed in January.
Now, do you know how the staff feels about the calendar or do you have a recommendation on it?
And my recommendation is always to start before Labor Day. I think that's an important thing to do in terms of getting ahead. I think folks are ready, especially if high school kids, I mean eighty-four percent of our high school kids are involved in sports. They're back anyway, they're already back two weeks prior to that. I think it's good to get a couple of days of professional development in, get the kids in for a couple of days to do that housekeeping, and then start right at it right when we get back after Labor Day. So the model that I've done in the past is two days of professional development Monday, Tuesday. Students in Wednesday, Thursday, everyone off on Friday, so it's a four-day weekend, and then students come in Tuesday. I've had some kind of informal conversation, anecdotal data from talking with teachers. It's been overwhelmingly starting before, but maybe it's just the ones that I'm talking to. It could be.
I have a question.
Well, since the last several years we've gone so far into June, I think people are reacting as well.
Yeah, mm, awful. I have a question, and I don't want to even throw rotten tomatoes at me, but what, we have the February break and the April break. Have we ever considered just having one break in March?
In March.
It seems like we have Fe-, we come off at Christmas and then we have February, and then like a little bit later we have April, and then that part of the year feels like there's so many breaks, and not that I don't like to take advantage of them, but to kind of combine them.
We are the only part of the country that does that. Everyone else has a, right, everyone else has a March.
It does, two breaks.
Right, everyone else has a March.
Do they have a two-week one in March or?
I will say, sorry, I'm sorry to interject.
Uh, no.
I moved here, actually, I didn't live here before sixth grade, and we didn't have a February vacation, and it was fine. It's not, I mean, I'm sure it would be hard for people who've had it the whole time, but we could get through the year.
But the whole state is on the same, right, isn't it?
Whole Northeast. Yeah, some of the Northeast, it makes sometimes, and Hampshire's a different week than we do.
They're the week after, they're the week.
Right.
They always have a difference, it's.
Right.
I mean, there are economic reasons we've always had a February break in the Northeast.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But also I think with just one, a break in March, like if we schedule stuff around like that Easter break, it seems like they get an April break anyways.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I just thought it was something to consider. It seems like there are a lot of breaks in the end of Easter.
I could look into that and see what, you know, what the feeling would be out there. I mean, I know that last year when there was an article about you folks getting out so late, I read the comments on it online, and there was a lot of people saying that. A lot of people saying, why are we doing February, let's just do it March.
Yeah.
I think it's awful, it's a lot to sort of bite off between now and our next meeting.
Mm.
Because that would be, would be the real cultural change.
It would be huge.
I, it's something I, I'm not just, I'm interested in talking about too, but you know, one thing, I think historically one of the reasons we have had February break in the Northeast is because that's the coldest part of the winter, and you don't have to heat the buildings and much then, for example. I don't know what the, if there's real savings there or not, maybe there's not, but.
It means tradition.
Growing up in Maine, I know there were, you know, there were some real savings in Maine to have a week off in February. But I think some of those historic reasons are probably no longer there.
Well, do you want to, maybe that, I mean, do you want to try to talk about that now, or just want to just sort of think about that and then? Because we don't need to vote this tonight.
No, no, no.
Right.
Vote on the next one.
No, I do think there's some questions to look into. I mean, I don't think we don't do it just because it hasn't been done. Like, I don't think that's really.
I mean, I'd like to know what people's thinking is out there, you know, like doing it.
But I, I don't know.
Versus before or after Labor Day, or versus the March thing?
No, no, I mean, well, the before or after Labor Day, I think we probably need to make that decision. We've been talking about that for a long time, but, but the March then.
Yeah, I think it's definitely something to think about. Is there any other districts in the state doing that?
There was one that I think Taunton actually did it a lot this past year, and they might have been the first ones to do it, or there was.
Oh, they did, they did, no?
They did, yeah, they did, they were the first. Because they went into a situation, I guess the previous year where they were doing the Saturday school, because they had so many days. Because they started after Labor Day, and it was some professional development days that really impacted their schedule. I'm not sure what the feeling is, but Chris is right, it's a cultural shift. I mean, folks kind of count on that, and, and I wonder if it's something that we take a look at and, and see.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. I think we would have to have a long runway on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to me, twenty fifteen is too soon, yeah.
Right. Making these trips that Robert was just talking about, their plans for the breaks and, right, so.
Right. Right, right. They're already scheduled for those two vacations.
Yeah, right, yeah, right. I mean, I didn't bring it up to vote on it for like the next count, just something to consider to start a discussion about it, just because
No, just something that you get.
No, I think it's a lot.
I think people, there's so many prof-, it feels like when you're a parent, there's so many professional days in the fall. And then you have, if you have a snow day, and then you have vacation, and then you have Martin Luther King, and then February break, it's like, when are these kids going to school? And then you go until the end of June, you're like, dear God, like, when are they?
Right, right.
Best time to get off.
So kind of condense it a bit, or, I don't know.
Well, do you?
Does Yom, does Yom Kippur just notice, does Yom Kippur fall on a weekend this year in Tosh?
I think we just have Rosh Hashanah.
Rosh Hashanah.
Yeah, that's what we have. And that's on the twenty-fifth, which is a Thursday, it's September.
Has there ever been any thought in having half-days on the religious holidays, like Good Friday and Shabbat?
I mean, a lot of it isn't just for the families, but it's also for the staffing. Because lots of times, I was in a district that tried probably about fifteen years ago to not have Good Friday off. And that became a huge staffing issue because predominantly Catholic staff and many people took it off as a religious day. So I think, you know, that's, again, that's a whole cultural issue too in terms of the conversation of religious holidays and all that. But I think that's, it's not just families, but it's also a staffing issue that comes into play there.
There's also the day before Thanksgiving. We, we're one of the very few districts that have like a full day off, which is a half-day which counts as a day.
A full day off.
But the teachers like that though, I would imagine, yeah. Half-day?
The rather.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've never heard of a full day off before Thanksgiving.
I know, I know.
Well, we've always had it in Medfield.
Oh, okay.
Well, as long as I'm.
Well, that's something to think about, you know, teachers a while to go. Just get another day, a half-day.
Just to get, even a half-day to get up Wednesday, a half, or a half-day so that people that are traveling for Thanksgiving could, I mean, they might not even send their kid on Wednesday. Not that I'm condoning that.
I think that's probably what happened, or that, that's part of the history behind the Met Hill Day is that so many kids were out on the half-day.
You know, they just. Oh, right.
Because I'm sure if Star is a half-day Catholic, we'd know, but it would start at the half-day and then it went into a full day off, I'm sure that's, that's what happens.
We like to have our kids actually learning on the days they're in school.
That's right.
So do you want to vote on one of these two calendars now, or do you want to wait until the next meeting?
Well, Jeff, your recommendation was to vote next meeting, right?
It was.
Oh, it was, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. Okay, that's good. We can talk maybe some about these other things in terms of the next calendar.
So fifteen, sixteen, look at those vacations, school year fifteen, sixteen, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's a lot to consider, just more schedules.
Right, there's a lot.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll go to the next item of business, which is the Madeline Grant Scholarship.
Mr. Chair, Janine Blackman has given all the necessary paperwork needed, and it's my understanding that you folks need to approve that to get payment for Janine.
We do this every year, so.
Right, she submitted her first semester grant.
Motion to approve. Some second, all in favor?
Aye.
Where's Janine's school?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that in here or is that somewhere?
Yeah.
It's in there.
Oh, there's.
And then the capital budget challenge?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe in your packets you received a draft capital budget. There were six projects that we're recommending be included for the coming year. Three of which are repeats from projects that were proposed last year at this time but were not funded, and three new projects. There's project for the front entry parking lot restoration, first half of it at the Wheelock School. Some masonry repairs at the Wheelock School. I believe there are some photographs attached to the documents that you've received, which indicate some of the preventative measures and restorative measures that need to be taken to maintain the integrity of the building. There's a proposal to do some removal of tile, some abatement in those classrooms, and then re-tiling those classrooms also at the Wheelock School. There's a project to do some repairs of some auditorium seats at the middle school. Again, that project was also proposed last year. There's the need to upgrade the power supply at the middle school serving the data center. That project is new. We've experienced intermittent but moderately severe problems with power spikes to the whole network. And the technology director, Mr. Corcoran, has strongly urged us to consider that project. The tennis courts here at the high school were in danger of frankly losing them. There are some increasing cracks. They don't fix themselves. We need to maintain the integrity of that facility, both aesthetically, but more importantly, playability, and even greater importantly, safety-wise, we need to do some work there. And then lastly, a new project that you proposed, pardon me, is replacing the so-called Warrior Van. As you may recall, we received that van as a hand-me-down from the Council on Aid, I think five years ago, when it no longer fit their needs. We were able to work an arrangement with the town. When it was being proposed, they were going to get a trade-in value of about a thousand dollars, or they estimated to get a thousand-dollar trade-in four, five years ago. We approached the town administrator and said, if the school department were giving the thousand dollars, we get it. And there was, that payment did not need to be made. Mr. Sullivan said, that's silly, we'll give you the van. And we've got, received terrific use from it. I attached to the proposal some information, some statistics as to the frequency that we use, we've used the van. Approximately half the usage of the van is for athletics, the remainder for various small class trips and clubs and things of that nature. In the last calendar year, two thousand thirteen, there were forty-five athletic charters that were avoided by us having that ban for some of the smaller athletic teams. The average cost of an athletic trip is over three, in last year was three hundred and nineteen dollars and change. We're over fourteen thousand, four hundred, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars, pardon me, was avoided by us having use of that ban. So those are the six projects, pardon me, seven projects. I need some remedial math apparently, or counting, that are proposed for your consideration. If I can be so bold to answer a question that hasn't been asked, because it's asked every year. The priorities in, the superintendent and I have discussed that we would recommend if funding is not available for all of the projects, and if history is a guide, funding will not be available for two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of projects, when historically, at least in the nine prior years that I've been here through this process, we've received somewhat, normally around the hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty thousand dollar range. Last year, school department did receive, I think, about a hundred and eighty thousand. There have been years where we've received less than a hundred thousand dollars. But the likelihood of getting two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of projects, my, well, there are members of the Warren Committee here, and I'm sure they absolutely think it's a great idea, likely not going to happen. So the suggestions that the superintendents and I would make to you for the priorities of the masonry repairs at the Wheelock School, the tennis courts, and the Warrior Van would be the first three projects that we would recommend for maintenance of our plant as well as safety issues, as well as cost avoidance. If there were some additional funding, excuse me, that would be available. We would suggest the data center UPS would be the fourth part. Again, historically, this has been presented to you, and it's been voted at a subsequent meeting that likely would work if that's what you would prefer to do and ponder. But I'd have to try to answer any questions.
Charlie, the data center electrical system, is that spiking because we're using more electricity, or because that system is aged and breaking down?
I believe it's neither, frankly. It's that we have more equipment, additional servers, additional needs. So it's not that we're using more, we're using more electricity, but we're using it because there's more machinery, that's being one.
Right, no, I wasn't, I wasn't talking about from concentration, but it's because of the technology that we're adding to the building.
The usage, yes. And to the buildings plural. It's not, it's not just serving the middle school.
So the servers for, the districts are there.
It's the servers and districts.
Some of their iPads probably, and everything that, everybody, everybody else.
Again, you're.
I think it was before even the iPad.
It was not.
No, I mean, like, but we're adding stuff to Wheelock Memorial, like, everybody.
It's adding the peripheral stuff, that's one of those technical terms again. So it's not the iPad itself, but it may be the Apple TVs, maybe the projectors, it may be all the things that we're doing now that weren't doing previously in the various buildings.
We're not using chalkboards as often.
That would be accurate.
Thanks, Charlie. I'm going to be tabled to the, consider these, for the, I mean. I don't know, do we take a vote on table? I agree.
I think you do vote for table.
Second. All in favor of table?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, brother.
Thanks, John. So we're going to adjourn the school committee meeting at this time. At least we should take a motion to adjourn, because we're going to go into the public hearing, and I guess that's the way.
We have adjourned the school committee meeting, a convening, a convening of, yeah, public hearing.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now we're opening, this is the public hearing that is the required that we do every year when we present the school's fiscal year budget.
So in terms of the FY fifteen public hearing, I'll go through the presentation, and then any questions anyone has from the school committee or the audience, we'd be happy to answer those questions. Here's what we're going to be looking at. So our mission statement is important, I think, to frame every budget in the mission statement, what we do, what we're in business, and it kind of leads to our decision-making if we go through this process. We'll go through the budget process very quickly, assumptions and drivers, the budget priorities, the funding sources, budget highlights. FY fifteen summary by categories, what's new for FY fifteen, so what things that we added to the budget that's making it a three point two one percent increase. FY fifteen requests that are not in this proposal, so there are many requests by the administration that are not in there, and then looking at it going forward. So in terms of our mission statement, I think what's important to remember in mission statements is that if you, if you take each part of that and break it apart, that you should be able to have measurable data on each one of these mission statements. So we're certainly not going to do that this year, being here eight months. But that's something that I'd like to do with the staff as we go forward, is to see, it's important to assess how you're doing based on your mission statement, and they need to be measurable goals. So we'll kind of go through that, but I've always thought it's important to, to frame that budget conversation with our mission statement. Again, that's what we're all working towards here at graduation last year, happy kids throwing their hats off. So the process so far, I think, you know, we've gone through this as a school committee, but for anyone else that hasn't seen that, we established priorities for the district as a leadership team, principals and content specialists develop budget, et cetera, et cetera. And we're down here, school committee input, more information as we receive, bless you, and revise the budget for the public hearing. So if you remember, two meetings ago, we're looking at a increase of over three point nine eight percent, almost four percent. And within those two weeks, we've, we've cut over two hundred thousand dollars because more information is coming in. It's important to remember, it's January, town meeting is four months away, and more information is coming in. And we've made some changes, not go over those as we go through the process. So some of the assumptions we made, so our federal entitlement grants we level-funded. If you remember, Charlie made a presentation a couple of months ago letting us know that we've lost money as part of this whole sequestration issue. So we've lost that in FY fourteen, so we're, we're looking at, at level-funded money there. Chapter seventy will be level-funded, however, the governor's first budget increased our chapter seventy-eight almost sixty-five thousand dollars, essentially twenty-five dollars a student. Again, there's two more budgets to go, the Senate and the House of Representatives budget. Enrollment could decrease slightly, that was an assumption we made when we developed this budget. So we've addressed that by eliminating one section of second grade. That's where we're seeing the decline there in those kids coming up in the Wheelock, so we're getting rid of one section there. The birth cohort, cohort data that we're looking at right now suggests that the big dip was in two thousand nine. So in two thousand nine, we saw the births really dip in Medfield, but now they're on their way back up again. So they're getting closer to what we were used to seeing around here, certainly not to the levels they were ten years ago, but they're on an upward swing. And then, of course, the impact of the state hospital in the forty B, we're not sure what that impact's going to be, but certainly will impact what our student enrollment will look like. Expansion of tuition-based programs, last meeting approved a full-day kindergarten expansion. And then we also added about fifteen more slots in preschool, again, tuition-based, and we'll take care of any of the costs associated with those programs. I don't know if you can see because of the podium, but circuit breaker will be funded at sixty-five percent. Initially, when we're going to this, we had that at fifty-five percent. Now we're looking more at sixty-five percent for circuit breaker. Remember, circuit breaker is that reimbursement we get back from the state from the previous year's special education cost. It has to meet a threshold, threshold usually around thirty-nine thousand, we're thinking it might be forty thousand. So as soon as we spend over thirty-nine thousand on a student, we get reimbursement from the state on that, on that money from the previous year. But we don't know those numbers until July, so again, it's January. Budget drivers that we have, all of our CPAs are off this year, so that's four CPAs. Our transportation contract is going to go out next month. Special education, certainly a driver in every district in the state of Massachusetts. Professional development is a driver here because we are continuing to focus on growth and improvement of our teachers, and especially in commitment with technology, professional development is so important. And then technology and infrastructure, hardware and software. When you go through the budget, you start to see, boy, that's a big jump in technology, that, that looks like it's a lot. What we've done is we've taken some of the technology software that used to be in either department budgets or, or school budgets, and moved them all into, into the technology budget. You see that big jump, I think it's like seventy-four percent or something in one of those lineups. Most of that is due because we're taking it from other places and putting it into that separate lineup. And then we have our teach point, again, a mandate that we can't control, the state mandate, we have Ed eval, and we have to have software to do that. That cost is embedded in there too. So you have lots of, of costs in that technology software that made that increase go, but those certainly are drivers in our budget. So one of the priorities that we had, we identified these as a leadership team and brought them to school committee. So we wanted to maintain and enhance the current staff levels, I mean, that falls under the high achievement for students, want to make sure that happens. Excellence in teaching, again, provide those professional development opportunities for our teachers and our, in our leadership. Technology, upgrade our software and our hardware, you know, see that's reflected throughout the budget as well. Early childhood education, which we discussed. And then, one of my favorites, increased revenue generation. So look at certainly all the fees that we have in the district, we need to take a look at that, and we'll do that a little bit later in the spring. But see if what we're charging for facility is, is the same as what other folks are doing. And see if, if what we're doing for tuition, what we're doing for fees for parking, all those kinds of things. I know I bring it up and people cringe around here, but I don't know any other place that doesn't have a bus fee. We have no bus fee in Medfield. Everyone has a bus fee. So, you know, those are the kinds of things, I'm not saying today that we have a bus fee, I'm just bringing it up as a conversation piece, that those are the kinds of things that we need to look, look at as a school district to see if we're, if we're generating the revenue that we can, and where we can generate more of them. So funding sources, take a look at FY fourteen, there's some important things on this that I think everyone needs to understand. Certainly the three components that, that I believe are school budget, the chapter seventy money, which we got from the state, again, very low as compared to most districts. I think we all know that Medfield does not benefit from, from the formula that chapter seventy creates. Local contribution. And then here's that other piece that sometimes gets forgotten. So in grants, tuitions, and fees in FY fourteen, the current, the current fiscal year, we're at two point nine million. So those are all the fees, grants, any tuitions, anything that we're generating as a school district, either writing grants, receiving the federal entitlement grants. But we are using this to run the district right now. So it really, even though our budget is twenty-eight million, it really costs thirty-one million to run the district as you see it today. So those are, we pay for staffing, we pay for supplies, we pay for, the kids pay for the fees in sports and athletics. Half our athletic budget comes through fees. So it's important to recognize that even though we take a big chunk from local contribution, and a pretty sizable chunk here for state aid, we're still generating. Now, this number's going to go well beyond three million next year, I believe, based on the tuitions that we're, we're going to get for preschool and full-day kindergarten, and then the review of fees. So if you folks think we need to adjust fees, then that'll be additional revenue generation that's going to come into the district. And then again, those types of things offset local contribution. You know, if we are generating a lot of fees for facilities, say, in, in use, we can offset the cost in the operation budget based on those, based on the generation that we can, we can, revenue we get in terms of generation. So let's look at the summary, I mean, this is basically what you have in your, in your book, just put in this format. So the system-wide categories, the general instruction, health, music, professional development. I'll take the professional development one, that increase right here, the twenty-three thousand. What we decided to do was take the professional development away from the content specialist in the general areas, and take all of that and centralize it to Central Office, so that it's part of a three-year professional development plan. We're going to look at the most important things for, for teachers to be spending their time and for us to be spending our money on. So we centralized the professional development process. It largely centralized now, but this additional piece takes that, that part away from our department heads and content specialists, and puts it into Central Office so that we can decide that. I think one meeting, a couple of meetings ago, I said that it's, it's our belief that if we develop a three-year plan for professional development, then, then we guide teachers in the direction where we think professional development could be in, and that whole adult learning theory where teachers need to be successful and be interested in what they're learning, well, we also do tuition reimbursement. So if folks want to take a class on something that they're very interested in that can help their, their instruction, they can do that. We want to guide them in the area that they, that we feel is important as a school district in professional development. Chris?
Jeff, are, are you, are you saying that actually that lot, that, that item is, is level-funded from FY fourteen?
It sure is. Yep, sure is. We've just taken it from other places and put it in there. Technology curriculum, and that's something that Charlie and I had conversations about, and I've talked with Ken and Owen about it too. It's kind of a weird marriage there, the whole media specialist and tech and curriculum, the way that all is together. Something we look to do in the future is kind of spread that out a little bit and separate that so that it's clear for, for folks. But certainly you see that, that increase there, and that's instructional, software, hardware, et cetera, there's a lot going on. And I have to say that the nice thing about what we're doing with this, with the iPad and bring your own device, is that parents have really stepped up to help us out in purchasing the devices. Imagine what our request would look like if we didn't have that. I mean, all the towns that surround us that have all these programs, their parents aren't buying it, the school district is buying it, the town is buying it. So I think it's important to, you know, to thank our parents for that, it's, it's great that they stepped up and they really allowed us to do that. But from our perspective, we need to provide that infrastructure so it works to. But from our perspective, we need to provide that infrastructure so it works to.
So the two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar increase in technology and curriculum, right?
Mm-hmm.
What, what, what is it? So it's, I mean, you said, so it's, it's additional software?
Is that page thirteen?
Is that thirteen?
Well, it starts, it starts at eleven.
So that's kind of what I talked a little bit before, that those big items that went up seventy-three percent or seventy-one percent, we're taking, we were taking software from elementary budgets.
Some of it is that.
Centralizing. It's also the Teach Point, which is our instruction piece. And then, when the technology department was re-imaging the computers over the summer and going to Windows seven, what they found were, is a lot of software in the elementary schools especially, that isn't web-based. For it to be continued on with, with Windows seven, need to be web-based, so a lot of that is some licenses and upgrades. There's RAS Kids Reading A to Z, Typing Pal, Star Math, which I think was bought at the end of last year because we had training over the summer for teachers. So those types of web-based programs had to be upgraded, there was no way that we could do them on the desktop. So that, that was an increase there as well. And then looking at, I know Apple TVs is on there, and you might say, what, what is the Apple TV? So here's an interesting sidebar on this. So everyone has, they all have the Epsons in the middle school and high school, and there's some in, in the elementaries as well. And now that we're doing the iPads, if you add an Apple TV to the Epson, remember when they were in here last week, last meeting, and they were going through and they were doing some of the real-time presentations and the kids were answering, and the teacher could see it in real time? Without Apple TV, you can't do that. So the teacher can walk around the classroom, do the assessments, do the teaching, and what the teacher is, is doing on the iPad is projected on there full-time with the Apple TV. Without the Apple TV, you can only use what we're using here, which is a PC hard-wired into, to the Epson. So really, again, if we want this to be successful, and we're, you know, parents are, are paying for this, this device, we wanna make sure they have the infrastructure to make it work, and that's where the Apple TVs come in to help out. So almost the entire high school has those right now, and most of the middle school, this is bringing it down to the elementaries. Because again, the Coalition has bought almost seventy iPads for our kids this year. So if they're gonna buy the machines, we need to support them with the infrastructure.
So are those iPads going to the elementary grades then?
The what, the Apple?
The, yeah, I mean, the, I guess, my question is really, I mean, you're looking at line five on page thirteen.
There's only twenty iPads there, right?
Right, but you, but you're talking about this, seventy iPads coming from the Coalition, are those for kids at the middle and upper grades?
Those are all elementary, all seventy, all seventy for elementary. So Memorial, Wheelock, and Dale have all had iPad purchase from the Coalition this year.
And are those, how are those being used, you know, because we have had a focused approach on how they're used at the middle school and high school.
Right.
With the pilot project, but, I mean, you know, is, is, how are our teachers being supported for that, how are they being deployed?
Sure, so we have teachers of all doing the ed tech teacher training, which the middle and high school teachers have done in the past. So we're getting teachers involved in that. We don't have a lot of infrastructure in the elementary school right now, so we have wireless hubs being put in the, in the library media centers. And right now, we're working off carts of, of iPads so teachers can bring their classrooms down to use the iPads versus having it in the classroom. It's the most cost-effective way to do it, and frankly, we need to introduce our kids to that early so that when they get to the middle and high school, there's, there's less of a learning curve and they're used to using those in, in the classroom. So at this point, it's not the, the best model because we don't have the infrastructure and wireless through all of these buildings. So the, with the points that we have wireless in the elementaries are the office and the libraries, so that's where we're, we're keeping us.
And so there's nothing in the, in this budget that proposes expanding our district iPad project to that level?
No.
We're just supporting donations and grants that have already gone to.
Correct. Correct.
But I mean, a likely next step eventually would be a BYOD program down through the elementaries, I would think.
Sure.
And we're trying to be, get ready for that, and so.
Right, right.
And so, if I can just stay on that, where are the, where are the projectors? I mean, I guess I understood when we had the override, this is before your time, so if you don't know, we put, we took all the project, they weren't Epson projectors, but we took the projector equipment that was at the middle school and brought that down to, to Dale Street.
Right.
To repurpose them so they can have the current, you know, the more, the highest tech at the middle school and high school where we're deploying these programs. So where are these projectors destined for?
Well, that override, excuse me, bought one hundred Epsons. Forty-five went to the middle school, fifty-five went to the high school. And then the ones that were already there, as you said, were taken down the elementary. Well, they're starting to break down, they're, they're older. We're actually having some issues with some of the Epsons in the high school right now, we've, they're still under warranty, but we've sent back, I think, four this year with some power surge issues. So almost have a nice job now putting some surge projectors into the walls for, to protect these, but, which isn't recommended by the company actually, so we're, we're trying to get ahead of that issue.
Does that relate to the capital issue for the?
Yeah, I thought, I made the same connection, but apparently it doesn't.
Okay.
I was hoping it did.
Yeah.
But it, but it didn't. So, so this would be to bring down, you know, some of the Epsons in the elementary classrooms that, that need them, some have them, some don't.
I mean, I know if they're not attached, it, it takes, my kids have had these classrooms, it takes fifteen minutes to calibrate them, and you've lost a lot of time just like. And if somebody bumps it, you lose, lose calibration and you have to start a little bit. And so the, and the, seven, can you tell us a little bit about the seventy-two computers at Dale?
Sure.
And how, and if you can, just, I'll throw the question out, take my answer offline, as they say on talk radio. How much of the ninety thousand, I don't know how much seventy-two computers cost these days?
Okay, so the original request was four hundred and seventeen for Dale. We cut that down to seventy-two. And one of the things that, the nice thing the district's been doing with computers, that instead of buying brand-new Dells, they buy reconditioned Dells that are warranted for six years, new Dells are warranted for three years, okay? The reconditioned Dells are four hundred, where a new one would be eight hundred, seventy, eight hundred. So we're doing a real nice job with that, these, these computers that we wanna replace are eight years old. And we'll, we'll put them in the library in the classrooms, every classroom has four computers right now, plus the teacher one. So we would look at replacing almost every single one, they're, they're counting on one seventeen, but seventy, seventy-two won't do every single one, but it will do a lot of them. And I think, you know, one of the things that we were doing at Dale, and I, and I know that we've talked about potential for, for Dale in the future, is that if something were to happen in terms of the Dale project, and I think that, you know, we, we've talked as a committee that, well, I'm gonna get to it in the agenda item for SOI, but, you know, we're doing SOI for Wheelock Boilers, but not for Dale this year. Because we, we thought that it was made, made sense for us with the timing, that when we talk to the state, if we're approved in, in the springtime, that it would be on the ballot almost the same time as, as Public Safety for a feasibility study. So it didn't make sense to, to do that timing, so we're not gonna do the SOI for Dale this year because of that, and we'll wait another year for that. But in terms of the instruction, the instructional technology, whatever we're doing in Dale is portable. And what, any of the wires that we're pulling, our people are doing, we don't have another company committed to do that. So whatever, anything that we're doing there, we can take out of Dale and use somewhere else. If Dale were to close today, we can use everything that's there. So we're trying to be thoughtful about that and whatnot, but as we said, we had this conversation before, we can't wait till another group of kids go through and another group of kids go through Dale. Because, you know, we're, we're missing out on two separate groups of kids that are going through one elementary school that don't have the technology because, well, we might get one someday, we just can't wait, we can't wait for that. So that's why we've, we've made some of those adjustments and put some of the infrastructure in there, but it's, it's all horrible stuff that we can take out.
And then, thank you. And the language labs, are the language labs still relevant in the iPad world?
They are, yeah, they are, in fact, again, going to a grant piece again. The language labs are being upgraded this year by, I'm trying to think how much the Coalition gave, but CSA and the Coalition each gave a good portion to replenish some of the language lab technology this year. And then Robert and Nat both had some money in their curriculum instruction that they put towards that as well. So again, that's been funded probably two-thirds out of outside money, not even our money. But yeah, it is, it is still relevant, they, they use them at the middle high school level. Big one, okay. And then our transportation, here, we're, we're projecting, again, that's going out to bid, but we're, we're projecting that, that number to go up eight percent.
And can I just ask on that, on the, on the, the athletics budget went up substantially in the, I thought it was in the transportation line, is that because that's going back up to bid?
Um, no, that's, that's actually because we've had some assistant coaches that have been coaching and not being compensated for that, and we're compensating them next year. So there, we added three coaching positions in athletics for next year. Assistant baseball, assistant softball, and I forget the third one. But that, that's the nine, I think it's nine thousand, ninety-two hundred, I think, it's right around there.
Okay, I see that, I guess I, I thought I saw a, a transportation, oh no, I was looking at, I'm sorry, it was the music budget went up.
Okay.
Music budget went up.
But I think, I think athletics went up nine thousand because of.
Yeah.
So looking at, again, one of the, one of our big drivers is pupil services, our special education department. Central office, again, that goes up two point three four percent. Our facilities, and then pupil services. So some of the changes that we've had in the last few weeks relate to pupil services, and again, that's the kind of ebb and flow that we have in budgeting the schools, especially with, with special education. So they've been in some meetings the last couple of weeks, and we ended up positive on those meetings, so we're able to, able to reduce that number substantially. Elementary schools, fairly straightforward. It's, again, this isn't because we, we don't like Dale Street. There's some retirements there, and we also took a curriculum director's position that was in the Dale Street budget, and put it into the curriculum where it should be. So we just moved, moved a salary out, and, and they've had, I think, I think it was four or five retirements. So that really impacts the bottom line, that's why you see some of these low numbers are, are based on retirements.
But what's gonna happen, because you'll have to, but, so when you replace some teachers, I'm assuming that you'll have to replace them, um.
We replace them, their classroom teachers, so if they're, they might retire at, at master sixteen and twelve.
Right, and just bring in.
You know, we, we bring them in, we, we budget for masters step four.
Okay.
So we bring much lower than.
Okay.
And then, you know, you might hire someone on bachelor's one and someone on master's ten, it, it all evens out for budget purposes, it's the, the matches for.
On the Memorial School, you budgeted the principal salary level, and I know you're getting, I'm just, I'm getting ahead of us on that.
Mm-hmm.
Agenda, do you feel like you're gonna get good candidates at that level?
I do, I do, and I think a lot of the administrative ones are in there because they're, it increases for FY fifteen to be the management reserve piece. So that it stays level for, for this year, and then that, whatever raises it, we negotiate or whatever comes out of the management reserve piece. But I think that's a, that's a good, good salary for that position, I think will be in a good shape. I mean, it's, it's an attractive place to be, you know, folk, I, I, I expect at least fifty applications for that job. You know, I know folks that have gone in, the only other thing, we're, we're competing with Westwood right now. Because they're, one of their principal assistants superintendent just got my old job in, where I was, so they're gonna try to get someone over there. So we're both the same time. So that's, that's the real competition right now. So middle school and high school and the athletic budget, again, not huge increases there. And there's that number, I think, it said ninety-two, it's ninety-three, that's for the additional coaches.
What's the change in Blake, the ninety-one thousand?
Question. Uh, ninety-one thousand in Blake, let me take a peek. Looks like a teacher salary. Yeah, teacher salaries, so just, just don't remember, just don't forget that steps and lanes are built into this. So the step is the automatic increase based on a year's service, and then the lane is the horizontal on the salary scale based on getting additional education or, or, or taking courses over the year. So that's, that's built into this, that's what eighty-eight thousand of that is, is the ninety-one thousand there. So our total, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred fifty-eight, eight-nine-seven, change of nine hundred thousand, five, eight-four-two, with an increase of three point two one percent. So what's new, what, what makes up that, that additional cost other than some of the obvious? Contract salary increases to both union and non-union people, that's part of the whole negotiation process, but that's part of the, the what's new in the increase. So looking at increasing opportunities for kids and what we're looking for, the world language and science at the high school, we need Mandarin four at the high school, based on what kids are bringing in, and then our science course, advanced science, AP science course, we have sixty kids taking this course, sorry, thirty kids taking this course online right now. So it's really a chance to, to add additional course and it adds.
Is it earth science course?
I'm sorry?
Earth science?
It's not, it's an AP science course. And, and I think, and I forget which one it is.
I think it's earth science, because we talked about it, that's the.
Environmental science.
They are.
It's environmental, yeah, I mean, they're taking. So it's environmental science at the high school, and we have a lot of kids online, so it's time to add a, it's only like a point two FTE, but it gives them another, another opportunity for the, for that course. The life skills program, which I think Capital funded the construction of that last year, we're ready to do that program now, so that's additional staff. But what we did, instead of just taking it on ourselves, we partnered with a collaborative, Except, who's certainly had run these programs in the past, and we split the, the cost of the staffing. And right now, it's for our kids, so our, three of our kids will be in this program. Certainly, you know, a couple of things, philosophically, they're our kids, they should be in our schools. Second piece, financially, it saves sending them out of district.
And eventually, it'll be developed to take new kids in tuition.
Correct, so that's what we're looking at doing as a couple of years, and that's where the partnership of Except is so important. We'll take kids in tuition-wise from other districts into our program, so that, we're excited about that. Parents and kids are excited about that, and I know that, that Mass and I will work on, on developing that program. Math support at Dale, I think that we've had conversations before, but we're not sure what that math support looks like, because it can go one of two ways, it can be someone that works as an interventionalist, working with kids, intervening on some of the skills they need, or it could be a math coach working with the teachers. So we're kind of looking at that model right now, our teachers are doing some heavy-duty professional development in math because the whole common core has changed how we teach math and how we think about math and what it looks like. So our teachers in, in elementary are doing a lot of professional development in math right now. So we're not sure what that looks like, it's either gonna be a coach or someone that does interventions. We have one at Wheelock right now, it's, it's, it's working well. Expanding the co-teaching model with Blake, so that's extending a, a teacher from a point seven to a full-time teacher, and working with a general ed teacher and a special education teacher working together in the same class. It's already in place there, we just need one more cluster to, to kind of go through that process. Expanding child education, again, that's all gonna be funded by tuition, and we'll have better numbers once February, end of February is going to be registration. So we'll get a real good sense by March what that looks like. And then additional time for special education staff over the summer. We're required by law, if a kid is going to regress over the ten to eleven weeks of summer, we need to develop a program for those kids. So we have that program here each summer, and one of the things that we needed to do this year was expand the time of one particular person, a first, a board-certifies behavior specialist, so we need to do that for the summer this year. Again, it's, it's one of those mandates, but it's, it's also something that will help our kids in the long run. So increasing the time for office and technology staff, and, and, you know, my comment here is it's just really an investment of future efficiency in the district. So we are required, again, to upgrade our student information system, the one that's in place right now is not compliant, it won't be compliant. It's called SIF compliance by the end of next year. So all the reports that we do to the state, which are many, and all the data points we need to send them, they will no longer recognize what our, our program is. Efficiency-wise, when kids go from school to school, the secretaries have to input all that data by hand, whereas most places, it's, you press a button, it all migrates up and we're done. So we're, look, we're gonna get a student information system this year, but in order for FY fifteen to support that, we need to have more time for the training and, and, and the transfer of data over for our office people and the technology people. It just, it just can't be done with the, the current hours that we have there. So that's, again, you might think it's, is it really needed, well, yeah, it's mandated that we need to change over to this program, but also to make it work correctly so that it's ready to go in September, the folks need to be there over the summer to do that work.
So does, does that mean that these will be one-time increases and we do more?
This, this should be a one-time, this should be a one-time, absolutely.
So do you, I think I saw those, but do you remember where they are?
Uh, if, probably around thirteen again.
Oh, I'll tell ya.
Yeah, right around there.
Oh, it's eleven, is that what, is that, are those books at eleven? Oh, it's eleven. Is that what, is that, are those books at eleven?
I'm sure, yeah, I knew it should be right in that area, so. No, it's on twelve.
So did that one, two on twelve? That's the one you're talking about, or two, two through six?
Two through six.
So i- is the expectation that? For FY sixteen, we won't need those extra days again?
That's my understanding, yeah, absolutely. And then we have a, we're eliminating um, a full-time maintenance person right now.
What, what, what is that about? I mean, it's, it's obvi- it's not impacting maintenance, it's, it's more of, what, how can we do that?
Well, we have, we've, we're doing it for the past, uh, two months, Charlie. Two months, uh, someone that never retired early in the year and Charlie and I talked about it and we wanted to see what it would look like. Not having four, but have three instead. And um, you know, the feedback I've gotten, Charlie might have different feedback, but it's, it's not perfect, but it's working. You know, working enough where we could look at it for another year and see, make an assessment next year. But I think, again, that that saves some money there limiting that position. And then one section of grade two. I'm sorry.
Well, we, if it feels like we're not keeping up with the buildings, it's, you know, we would wanna.
Right.
Not, you know, just.
And then eliminating the one section of grade two to address that enrollment. Um, and then we'll see how that goes. Each year we might be doing that per grade level. We'll just see how that could be the, the group of kids that has a lower number, we'll just eliminate a section each time.
So Jeff, is that a teacher who's retiring, or does that teacher move to third grade? What happens to that?
Uh, normally that teacher would not have a position, however, or would, would bump someone else out. Uh, but this person is a very gifted, I'm told, kindergarten teacher who was kindergarten last year, who was moved to Wheelock. And because of the expansion of full day, she would go to full day and her to, and her.
Oh, okay.
She'd be paid by tuition.
Okay.
Wouldn't show up there. So in terms of expenses, um, enhanced nine-one-one, we have that now. So what we discovered in September, October, is that if nine-one-one comes out of these buildings, the police department had no way of knowing. A, what building and what rumor came out of it. And it was all tied into our, our phone system. Uh, but now it's all been upgraded and that, that cost has kicked in and will kick in next year as well. So we thought that was a pretty important safety measure that needs to be taken. Again, instructional hardware and software, what I've talked about a couple of times now is, is, you know, upgrading some of the, the computer-based to web-based. And there's certainly a cost associated with that. Our evaluation software, Teach Point, has a cost associated with that. Internet access upgrade as we continue to explore and have improvements in our iPad and our BYOD. We need to keep upgrading that and the speed and the access and the bandwidth, all that needs to be upgraded. Um, new music equipment, some building repairs, and we're starting to see those come up a little bit uh, as we, our buildings get older. And then um, curriculum supplies, I, I, I really felt was, in the three elementary schools, has been underfunded. So put some extra money in there um, so that they could uh, purchase some of the materials that they, they really need. You know, so we, we looked at that and, and that, that's probably, you know, that's gonna be an ongoing theme for me. Is looking at the elementary schools in terms of what, what they need in, in instruction and learning. But I think curriculum supplies was the place to start there this year.
I know you, when you came in, that's a lot of what you heard was that the elementary, from teachers and parents, that elementary schools hadn't been as funded as they might have been. Are there specific expenses that, that they put forward here that, that you know, you can think of off the top of your head? Or is this just generally, we haven't been able to buy new supplies for ten years and we need to, to bring them up to?
Um, I, we were.
I mean, I know you're just not approving blank checks for any good things.
No, no, no. I'm just, to give you an example, we were funding um, a program in the middle high school that, that probably addressed. Oh, I don't know, maybe thirty or forty kids. Uh, it tripled the rate of math supplies for Dale Street. So things like that's just an example that stuck in the, stuck in my head. You know, things like that, that uh, just take a second look at those kinds of things and see what, what folks are, what they need in those areas. And I think one of the things that we'll talk about too is that whole consistency, and I think you've heard me talk about that before. Um, this starts to bring that consistency to the three schools, so they're looking at curriculum not as their own three little islands. But as a building block from one school to the next. And I think that's just really, really important for our elementary schools, so this, this begins that process with the curriculum supplies. So here's some of the things that were requested by the leadership team that never made it. So math curriculum coordinator pre-K through five, we have one of those for language arts. We do not have one for math pre-K through five right now. Uh, reading specialist in elementary, a math specialist in elementary, music teacher at Dale, uh, technology aide in two buildings. Tech integration specialist, and this is something that I think uh, will reappear in FY sixteen. Because as we, we have more and more of the iPad and BYOD initiative. Our two folks that are doing Neil and Diana do a great job of this, but you could use one more person doing this there. Um, as we expand to elementary, you're probably gonna need another person doing some of this great work. And again, the maintenance person that we, we said before was, was cut. And then um, some major expenses. I, I, I talked a little bit about the technology upgrades that we didn't, there was some switches that Ethan Owen had requested. Additional computers, iPads, Chromebooks, took them all out of it. They're not in this budget. And then the mathematics program, uh, it was eighty thousand dollars the original budget for this. And that would be a um, a K to five program of mathematics. We're just not there yet. We're, the teachers are getting some training, we need more discussion of what that mathematics program looks like. Uh, I think that um, it's one of those issues where the quick fix would be to get a program. But, you know, the long-term sustainability for, for instruction and learning is to have that conversation, look at what's working, what's not. And then make a decision based on that, not just a quick fix, here's the program, we're done. So that was, that was taken out of there too. So that was eighty thousand dollars that was in there, that's, that's a pretty big cut.
I have a question, so.
Sure.
To go back to the last slide, the, the reading specialist, math specialist, are those, what schools do they, they're all elementary schools?
All elementary, yeah. So the, the reading and math, the reading and math specialists were both, um, I think one was Wheelock, one was Memorial. Uh, music was at Dale, and the tech was, I forget what the tech was.
These aren't cut, these, this is what.
These are just what they thought, the, the principal thought that they needed and never got them.
This is what the, the leadership team was advocating for, but uh, did not make this version of the budget. So just, you know, a few things, just to keep in mind as we go forward. Uh, it's a long way from completion, and as we've seen in the last couple of weeks, where we've already cut over two hundred thousand dollars. Based on new information that comes in, it's a pretty fluid process. House and senate budgets haven't been released. Um, keep in mind that town expects us to be no more than two and a half percent, uh, which we know that.
The, the tax levy goes up by two and a half percent, but that's different than every budget going up by two and a half percent.
Correct, that was what the expectation was at the meeting, that, that two and a half percent. And I just always like to throw this in to recognize that when, when you put two and a half percent across all departments in a town. Not many departments can, can burden with the cost and the mandates that we are as a school department. And how it can change overnight. Tomorrow morning, I get something on my desk where someone moved into town and puts the budget on its end. Uh, we've had students move in this year where English is their second language, we probably will have to provide instruction for them. We had to hire another person just to, to mandate, to meet the mandate on that. So it's, it's just always changing. It's never, what you get at town meeting is the number. But what it looks like by the end of the year is very, very different. It's always very fluid. And, you know, one of the things that I think is important is that we need to stay competitive. And I think we've had this conversation during the MCAS presentation where, I'm not so sure anyone in this room was happy at thirty-seven in Boston Magazine. And I think that we need to stay competitive and, and again, that, that whole budget piece per pupil is one indicator. There are twenty-two other indicators that, that judge us on that. And when we look around us, um, some of the communities that are touching us, one and two. So I, I'm competitive by nature, and I think it's real important for us to um, make sure we stay competitive. And make sure we do the best for our kids so that they're successful going forward, so. That's my, my two cents on the competitive piece. Questions?
Uh, Jeff, you got the most of the couple items that I want to ask about, can, but can I ask you about on page nine?
Mm-hmm.
The new equipment at the high school?
Is that the music equipment?
Line four, yeah, auditorium chair and stand racks.
I think if we, it's one of those things that um.
It's a small amount.
It is, and Doug advocated strongly for it in our meeting and, and he gave some real compelling reasons why and uh. It's one of those items where, do you have to have it? No, but I think it's, it's something to improve the program and something that, that he felt strongly about.
But what is it though?
It is. I wanna say was, was this, the seating? Let me just.
The note, the note says auditorium, auditorium chair and stand racks. I just didn't know what that was.
Oh, so that's, that's, so we have, we have the auditorium chairs and we bring them in for performances? It's, it's the racks that make it easier to bring it in. Yeah, yeah, it's that whole, right, it's that whole, that whole system that goes along with that. Yeah, sorry.
And then on page eleven?
Yeah.
On six?
Secretary?
Yeah, is there something about the program that makes us want, need to move that up from a?
Well, I think one of the things, again, in January, one of the things that we're looking at is uh. Centralizing professional development and running it through that whole office and what that, you know, what that looks like with purchase orders and all that. And making that secretarial position take care of that, or maybe doing some other restructuring with HR. Again, that's January, it may not be there in April, but um, that was in the budget, I guess the last two years I was told, and then was removed near the end. Uh, but I think right now that with the, with the centralization of PD, it makes sense for us to do something with that. But again, it's, it's fairly early in the game. Those are all the questions I asked. If you all agree really.
Any other questions? No, it's a public hearing, so I think that means that we take questions from everyone who wants to do that here.
You all have an interest. Everybody in the room, except the press, have invested interest.
Right.
Well, I'll, I'll answer just one question, and this is probably more reflection of my poor memory. Um, in the introduction of the technology, I'm going back when Bob McGuire first introduced this. My, my impression, maybe you're wrong, was that as the iPads were being introduced in eighth grade and they were migrating up. But what I heard tonight was actually an accelerated migration down, and that, it could just be my memory is bad. But that seems to me to be a change in your direction, uh, and was.
No, I don't think.
Yeah, I think that you're, I think you're mishearing, if I can. That was the question I was asking Press and Jeff on earlier. We, as a committee, are migrating up, well, we started it at eighth grade. We're migrating down to seventh grade now and up to ninth grade, and so we'll continue that. And I, as a committee, my understanding is we've committed at least to the middle school and high school so far. But the other piece you're hearing, Gus, is that, is a commitment by the community outside of us. Contributing iPads to the lower grades, not at the same sort of all kids across the grade level approach that we've taken with the middle school and high school. But giving that access to those lower grades um, on a grant basis. But, you know, not every grant, not every grant is free, right? Sometimes you have to support what comes with it.
Right.
And we made a decision in this budget and as a committee to support those initiatives. If teachers take the time to write a grant and say, here's a real way I'm gonna use this material in my classroom, this technology in my classroom. We're not undertaking any budget responsibility for that technology, except to support the wireless deployment and things, and things like that. So it's not a policy shift from what Bob uh, suggested when we approved. It's a, it's more, it's coming up from the community and teachers.
The, the eighth graders who had the model, they had, that had the pilot last year, those computers, which we supplied. Those have been, um, those eighth graders and now ninth graders are bringing their own device. So unless they've shown, as far as I know, unless they've shown a financial need, which we have some that, that we've done that. Those, those, those people who had school-supplied computers in eighth grade had brought their own devices in ninth grade. And they might, and in that sense, I think they're migrating down, I believe. Those, those computers are.
Yeah, we have actually a group of sixth grade kids that are using Nexus tablets. Uh, we have a group of them doing that now too. And that's a whole cluster of kids.
That's another. Those all came from grants.
Right, those came from grants.
And everything from like fifth grade down that's an iPad or anything are all Coalition and CSA funded entirely, so.
Well, we're, we're, the reason I'm asking is if those, and the Coalition is right, so there's no, there's wonderful things that happen. But if, if those donations lead to financial implications for the school system at the time when we're, we're, the Warren Committee. We're struggling to figure out how to, how to fit things through a pretty tight hole. It's the, it's the implications that that has that's of concern, because I think when we, when the Warren Committee supported the school. It, with the first, a year even, maybe two years ago, with the idea of not being as, you know, hard-nosed about budgets. Because Bob at the time had explained what you were trying to do. We kind of bought into that and said, okay, we understand.
Is that the override, the override for?
No, it's after the override, it's in the last two years, last, last, even last year.
It's the hundred and fifty we've been carrying for professional development.
Okay.
It was, it was, there was a program that was there, and even though it was a more, if you just did a peanut butter spread, you'd say, well, this is more growth here than other places. Given the circumstances. We kind of understood the concept. We said, all right, we'll, we'll buy, we hear what they're saying and it makes sense. So when I see another little lobe show up, given the circumstances that we know we're fighting with this year.
But just, I guess, just imagine what it would be like if, if we didn't have parents that supported it. Would you be able to have that experience for kids at all?
Our job would be a lot easier, we wouldn't be dealing with that.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, you go to Westwood and they, they bought it, and they.
Right, and other, and other districts are buying. And we're getting a, you know, people giving us some grief, you're, you know, we're, we're, we're instituting a technology requirement, and we're not providing the technology.
And, and just, the, the, the line items, Gus, where the, where that expense. The contribution, the, the donation of those devices to our elementary grades, where that shows up in our budget, I think. Is on page thirteen and in, in line six. And what we're actually requesting this year is less uh, by about forty-five hundred than we requested in the past. So, I mean, which is not to say that we're not requesting money, obviously there's still money there. But it's carrying, it's a, it's an incremental increase to carry down what we think is an important. First of all, support the initiative that's requested by the community and the parents and teachers, but. Um, and it's separate from your question, you know, I've got a ki- a kid at Dale and a, and a kid at Blake. And to see that technology, the way it's become just so integral to their learning process. I mean, we went skiing this weekend and my daughter's sitting in her, in her bedroom at night doing all of her homework on her iPad. You know, without, she didn't bring a single book, she just did all her homework. You know, she's kind of that way, so she did it for most of the week, but. You know, even the kids at Dale aren't using the iPads, but they've all got their um, Gmail accounts now. They're all doing their papers on the computer at home. I mean, it's costing us fortune, we just gotta have new computers for everybody. But that, that collaboration has really taken, I think, education drastically forward in Medfield in just a very short period of time. And I think it's happening in every other district as well, at, at different costs. Uh, we're doing it in a very low-cost way.
Very low cost.
But uh, I think it's really changed in a dramatic way, the way at least my, just anecdotally, my two daughters are learning in school. And it's not costing us. Um, most of, most of that, the Gmail accounts, for example, the Dropbox, all that is completely, you know, budget neutral, it's free in the budget.
As a committee though, the things we sort of, and it, it's not just to the school, it's for all the other budgets, is, is uh, the things that sort of, the free things that cost you money. You know, getting a free, you know, the cost of a horse is cheap compared to what it takes to keep it up. You know, getting a free horse is probably one of the most expensive gifts you'll ever get. So that sort of, our sort of attitude is like, okay, yes, this is free, but what are the carrying costs for a program, an item going forward that then impacts the budget? And, you know, you guys are the biggest nails, so of course you get the biggest hammer, but we apply that across the board to all the.
Right, but for the, but that's what I'm saying, those, those free horses, the budget for those. I mean Gmail's not a gift, that's, I mean, you all have Gmail account that, or Yahoo kind of something. The uh, the free horses, I think, are reflected, the incremental cost is reflected in the line item, that we're actually requesting less money this year than that.
But I'm just philosophically just.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's no question. The tech, educational, clearly, in five or some maybe even shorter horizon. Most education can be delivered technologically, you know, through technology. And so what we are investing in is the infrastructure that allows us to do that. There's no question. We, we need to, because if we don't, we're gonna be beyond, we're gonna be stumbling quite a bit behind where other districts are. And where I don't think the people in Medfield wanna be, so. While we're doing a lot to get um, the BYOD program to caution, you know, to, to the users kind of. I think that there is a fundamental need to make sure we have an infrastructure that supports it. So the stuff that I think. So the stuff that I think coming out of the technology upgrade is mostly related to supporting this kind of a technology program.
Sure is.
And I don't, we're not, we're not over the top, I mean, 'cause I work on a number, you know, I work in a number of districts in my business, and it's, they can get way over the top. And they have state money that helps them, and they're gonna be stuck. What, what are they gonna do five years from now when they've used up these free computers they got?
One of the other things that we were looking at in terms of bringing the technology, and that there were ways that would reduce costs over time, for example, in the textbook area. Were we able to see any of that yet?
We're getting there.
It's better than it was a year ago.
What you don't see is, is massive requests in here for new textbooks, you know. In the past, especially in social studies and history areas, you'd have to every, I think about every five years, we had to buy a whole new set of textbooks across the district. You don't see massive requests. I mean, we're placing sets here and there where they're physically worn out and they're still in use. But by and large, the kids aren't using them as much, and where, you don't see, if you went to go through here as, as we did tonight and as I've done, there aren't requests for a whole new fourth grade set of textbooks for math, for example.
Right, you're saying you don't see an increase. I'm saying, are you seeing a decrease budget year to year at what point?
Well, it was very difficult historically to do, but it seems to me, from what I'm hearing, it's getting a lot easier to get.
So there's so, there's so much open source education out there now?
Right.
So that they can, teachers can essentially just go there, go online and get a course on whatever they're teaching, and they can download that, the kids get it on the iPads, and that, so that's what they're doing, they're doing a lot of that.
Right, no, I, I speak, I get to be in the classroom sometimes, but I just, again, I'm just looking at it from a class perspective. Because, yeah, this is the direction we need to go, but we just need to balance that with, with the talent and support. You know, it's not, it, not only, anybody has a philosophical, right, about it, it's the right way to go. But how fast do we go, and how do we get, get the taxpayers to buy into it, the rate that we're trying to do it? You know, can they swallow it? We just don't have any industry.
Yeah, I, I think, you, you aren't seeing what you used to see, which is a big bubble every three years for textbooks that just came in one year in one way. That, that, that bubble hasn't appeared for, since I sent them to the committee. Right. So, so that's where the saving is, that you're not getting those. And again, the incremental cost of the technology, I mean, it's a big cost on parents.
I was gonna say that, I, I mean, I think Medfield is pretty unique on how much parental involvement and what parents do that are also taxpayer, obviously taxpayers in this town, between the school supplies that parents donate every year, the hundreds of dollars that you pay in like a day at Staples for back-to-school supplies. You know, I think, you know, as far as a free horse, the parents who buy have three kids between, you know, or four, or five, six children that are in middle school, high school, that are buying all these iPads devices for every kid. And then they're going home, and all their costs are going up for all the kids that are then, then using them in their houses. So I don't think that, I, I think Medfield is unique in the amount of time and money that parents spend. Not only volunteer time in every single classroom, their fundraising, all that's expected of Medfield parents, I think, is more than any other towns, and I have friends in so many other towns that are not doing some of the things that the families in Medfield are just expected to do, because we live here. And they do, they step up to the plate and they do it.
We're very fortunate as a school district.
Extremely fortunate.
And I wanted to, I was gonna bring up the same point you mentioned about bus fees, and one of the reasons we haven't had that is because, as a committee, we've been trying to be mindful of what the expenditure is per, for families. You know, we've had members on the committee who felt like, well, is a public education supposed to be free? And these things just keep getting added up. It'd be really interesting to look and see what, what families are paying in a year between now with the technology and athletics and all those expenses that you're, you know. So just as much as the town is squeezed and squeezing these budgets, it, you know, it's almost going back to the families to pay for it, you know, it becomes almost like a recessive tax. I think we should look, we've been over this bus fee thing a number of times in the years that I've been on the committee. And I'm not saying I'm not in favor or in favor, but I think that we do have to be mindful of what the families are paying, contributing in a year.
Yeah, I don't know if this is helpful, but I, I, having done this a couple of years now, whenever there's pressure, we have a discussion and it has a tone to it, it's kind of like, is your plan good enough? You know, is it justified? And I, I real, I realize actually, when the smart boards came up a couple of years ago, which was, was the override year, but part of our thinking was, ah, we don't think that smart boards need to be regarded. Our job isn't to tell you what your budget needs to be. Our job isn't even to evaluate whether you have a good plan or not, and for what it's worth, I think we all are confident that you do have good plans, and that there's good ideas that need to be out there. Our job is to try to figure out, A, what, what the town needs, and what we think the taxpayers can afford. In this particular year, the thing that we're coming from is trying to paint a picture for taxpayers that says, you're gonna see, you've already seen with the Red Gate Farm, you will see with the state hospital, you will see with the water tower and the public safety building, and perhaps in a year or two, we can put the SOI in with another school, there are gonna be several demands for long, for, for debt exclusion overrides. And it may be not quite as extreme as I thought it was gonna be this year, 'cause Mike Sullivan had mentioned that perhaps the public safety building, a big chunk of it will go out of here. So perhaps that's a little helpful for this year, but then that makes things more complicated for your place to do something. The following year, we're trying to paint a picture that's palatable. If, if we're going to town meeting, we say, these are the things we should be buying. Our, our goal is to paint that picture in a way that people agree with all the things we should be buying, as opposed to here's ten things you might wanna buy, both the ones you want up and the ones you don't want down. What that's, what that means for us is for this year, we don't, as we've said, we don't plan to entertain an operating override. Interestingly enough, the budgets that have come in almost across the board for any of the major departments so far, all, for some reason, think this is the year to go for it. So we're actually, we're seeing an incoming tide across the board and on the operating side in a year that we almost would like to hold the reins back a little bit on the operating side. So I, I only say that because I'd like you to at least appreciate the pressure that we're under and understand that if we push pressure, put pressure back on you, it's not because we don't buy your, your credibility.
Sure.
You know, in particular, this year during this superintendent, I would much prefer. That's what I mean, this superintendent here, I would much prefer to be able to give you flexibility in your first year to put your first year's mark.
I appreciate that.
We're having a heck of a time finding ways to do that, but the incentive would be there even if we weren't sure. But it's just, that, that's the, that's the factor we're dealing with. It's not the value, the quality of your plan, it's the picture we're trying to paint for town meeting that's got some real tight spots for us. We haven't seen all the budgets yet. We have not taken a position for you guys yet. We, we know that we expect pressure. But we're not drawing a line with the same yet, 'cause we don't know what the rest of it looks like, and we haven't figured out which things we can push on.
Is the town looking at revenue resources, coming up with anything new to get additional revenue?
Yeah, I, 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 all this is just kind of, I won't quite call it rumors, but I mean, I think the town's looking at putting solar energy facility in, if we can figure out how to do that. If nothing else, that at least will drop our electricity. I think the Warren Committee's looking, as we have for a while, actually looked at certain things about the town with the question, could we be more efficient in how we do things? You know, what probably affects you all the most that ties into other departments is IT. Everybody's got their own IT, and the town's started to consolidate, and, you know, there's a smart way to do it, a dumb way to do it, it's not just automatically matched at all.
Can we share some?
Yeah, yeah, and so some of that's already happened, but there's, as we look at some other budgets, we're saying, why is this thing over there?
I think we're, I think we're probably developing more, we're, we're moving from a public hearing to more of a conversation than we typically would have between our subcommittee and.
Yeah, yeah.
So with that, and we do recognize that we're part of a larger town, so we'll, we'll have that continuing conversation. So unless there's some other comments, we'll close the public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
I move that we reopen the regular school committee.
Second, all in favor? So the next item is the statement of interest related to the boilers.
I'm sorry, do we vote the budget tonight?
Yes. Oh, we have to vote that? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. We didn't yet. No, we need to. So.
I move the superintendent's recommendation of a FY fifteen budget of twenty-nine million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars. All in favor? I just say before, on the, on the vote, I, I appreciate the work that went into this, and I, I do appreciate that, Jeff, that there aren't, despite everything that we talked about tonight, you haven't yet had an opportunity, as Gus alluded to, to really put your mark on this budget. There's no, there's no sort of, you know, signature program. Like Bob had a lot of, our last superintendent had a lot of signature programs that he brought forward in large part 'cause he had built up a lot of political capital and was able to do that, and, you know, he spent a lot of time studying them, and I'm mindful that you haven't had the opportunity to do that in this budget, so I look forward to working with you to do that in future years.
We took a vote.
Yes. So the SOI for the Wheelock boilers, what I need is your support this evening to submit the SOI. And what that entails is, we're working on that right now, but you'll, you'll get a chance to look at it before it's submitted. But our next meeting is February tenth, and the submission date is February fourteenth. So if, if you were to vote tonight to just support the submission of it, and then I'll bring it to your meeting on the tenth to take a look at it, and then, I just don't want a snowstorm to happen on the tenth, and then we missed the, we missed the date, so that's why I brought it up for this meeting. So what we're looking at right now is, the estimates, I think, are two or three hundred thousand dollars to replace the boilers at Wheelock. Instead of keeping that on the capital, we thought about putting that in the SOI, because the state is, is, is doing some funding with that. I think it's about fifty, could be about fifty percent, probably in the high end for, for that, but I haven't got an exact number from MSBA yet on what that reimbursement looks like. But I'd have to do the same thing with the Board of Selectmen. I talked to Mike Sullivan last week about it. He said that you would put it on the agenda, and that they would certainly support the submission of it. When you submit it and you support the submission, doesn't mean that if we get it, then, then you have to do it. So it's really just a, it's a, it's a check and balance that the superintendent talks to the school committee about it, talks to the Board of Selectmen about it, and there's no big surprises if it gets accepted. So that's all it really is. I would ask if you would, you would vote that, and then I will give you the finished SOI in our February tenth meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Memorial search update, we sent the letter out to parents and staff to form the committee. It went out last week, and I've got, I think about ten folks interested. So some, some people don't have the scheduling capability, but they still wanna be a part of it. And it is a good cross-section of folks who are happy about that, and they have to be making those appointments at the end of this week. So we'll get, get a sense of what that looks like. The applications are coming in fast and furious, and they're coming in old-fashioned way through snail mail and also through school spring. So we're getting a, a good group of people that we're looking at, so. Again, it's an attractive to, to work in, and I think we get a lot of great candidates.
Do you have, I don't know if you, do you have any interests internally, or is, are they all from?
I haven't gotten an internal one. Purged rumors, but I haven't, haven't gotten.
Hereditary.
Unofficial until we get the application.
What's the deadline on that, for the application? That was like another month, right?
It is.
Yeah.
It's the twenty-fourth, I think?
February twenty.
Or right before the, either twenty-fourth or right before vacation. And, and recognition, just a couple of things, I think last meeting I talked about, the help that Bob Meehan's given us through the lockdown and, and some of the training with staff. He was with us again today at the junior high, at the middle school and high school, talking to the staff, he and I, the principals. So we're gonna, the letter's going home tomorrow to all parents, letting them know that we're doing a safety drill, a lockdown, Thursday and Friday this week. So elementary school is on Thursday and middle high school on Friday, and it's all explained in the letter to parents. But the chief's been great, getting his contacts with the Metropolitan Safety Council, getting them in, and we're having meetings with administrators, and it's going real well. So this'll be the first time the district does it with kids. So we're, we're working in teams on Thursday and Friday to go around and to assess it and to try to identify all the areas we need to improve on, and we hope to do this two more times this school year. This'll be the only time we'll announce it to parents, though. So we wanna just kind of give them a sense of what it looks like and ask them to talk to their kids about it beforehand. We're not using the term lockdown, we're using the term safety drill. And a lockdown, the term lockdown will only be used if it's the real thing. So the teachers have been great, lots of questions, obviously, with the procedures, and there's been some training that's gone on, so looking forward to that, and then, you know, making improvements on it as well. But I think it's, it's a necessary part of schools these days.
It is.
Things you wish you didn't have to do.
Exactly. I said to the high school staff, I have you probably sitting here saying, I can't believe we're having this conversation right now, you know, because it is. But something that, that we need to do as a district and make sure that our kids are safe. So I'll, I'll give you probably an update next month on how that went and some of the issues that we found. I can't get into too much detail, obviously, because of security, but give you an overview of what, what it was like. And then Dale Street has done some, some great work the last couple of weeks. I was able to see a, a class where the kids were doing Google Docs, and they were putting their, their narratives and their poetry on Google Docs, and the teacher was responding back. And so instead of the traditional, and we've talked about here before, the iPads, traditional passing your paper and getting red marks, now it's passing the paper even at Dale Street and getting feedback from the teacher along the, along the margin lines. Kids love it, they're very excited. It's a huge motivation for kids to be using that. So I walked into a couple of lessons that, that Neil was doing with Mrs. Barr's class, and it was great. So I'm real happy about, about that's progressing. That's all I have, Mr. Trump.
So we knew public input, which we traditionally walked around the table, any, any comments at all?
I think I got some.
Oh, Charlie, sorry. Thank you, Tim. Now that you folks have adopted a budget, in order to get the budget mailer out.
I'm sorry, Charlie, for.
That's okay. In a timely fashion, I'm playing with the schedule as we speak, but in order to get it to the printer, get it back to the printer, get it out in the mail, with your schedule, I think we're gonna shoot for March seventeenth to have the mailer approved by you folks. Given that, and given that it's now plus or minus February first, that's six weeks from now. So if there are things that you folks would like to have changed, if, if you could get those ideas to the superintendent or me as soon as possible, because this is an intensive process, to get it to, to get a draft, to get the tweaks that occur once that draft occurs.
Looking at me about that.
No, I wasn't, I was just, you know, but I was thinking about you.
I was actually wondering, I wanted to ask Jeff, what do you think, I mean, do you anticipate any big changes to it? Or do you like the format, or, you know, I guess?
I mean, I think there might be a, a couple of data points I'd like to look at differently. But I think, you know, it's, it certainly serves its purpose and gives a lot of information to, to the community, so.
I mean, I assume it's gonna basically represent what we saw tonight in terms of contact, I mean, in contact.
So, but my goal would be to get, to get a final draft approved by mid-March, I need to get a first draft together, if possible, by your February meeting, and that's gonna be very tight. So, and there's no second meeting in February. So that's the problem, is, is to getting it done. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to say midterms are going well. I know a lot of people kind of hesitant about the new scheduling. But I think it worked pretty well, you know, teachers been great with questions and stuff.
How did it change? It's all week, it's all the weekend in between, or?
No, it changed so that everyone takes the same subject at the same time. I think it was nice, standardization, you know, reduced cheating or whatever, but, you know, it worked well, I think.
Just that I'm away on business for our next meeting, so. Thank you for making it, for danger of not having time. You know now.
The only other piece that I wanted to point out to people, if you're interested, it's not school, but it's sort of related, is we touched on the public safety building is being presented to the Selectmen tomorrow. So you can watch it on TV, if you don't have to come. But anyways, they're talking, the committee's gonna talk about the whole program and, and what the request for this town meeting would entail, which would not be for the whole building, but that'll be presented tomorrow night. That's it. So no other business. That's it, so no other business, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.